Thank you, Mayor Barnes. Good evening. Again, my name is Matt Chadfield. I am the Executive Director of the Webster Economic Development Alliance. It is a nonprofit published private partnership and is composed of the town of Webster, the village of Webster, the school of this district, the Chamber of Commerce, and then here in the village of Webster, we're lucky enough to have a business improvement district. So those five entities got together and created this entity. And we work on behalf of the entirety of Webster Town and Village. So the mayor described in brief what the charge of the committee of what is really not even a committee, it was a working group as then. And just for a quick background, very brief background for those of you who had not been following this as closely as many others, the town and village operate two largely independent sewer systems. And they do cross paths at the final point just before the effluent gets discharged into Lake Ontario. They share the same pipe, but otherwise they are independent. But it just so happens that in sharing the same pipe, the waste stream from the village does travel all the way to the town sewer plant, which would potentially make, logistically, the consolidation more feasible in this particular arrangement. 2016 conceptual discussions were had regarding consolidation. Each the town and the village are contemplating significant capital investments. It made sense, the leadership on both parts decided it made sense to at least talk about why, why not make one larger investment? And or why should we? 2019, a joint study was approved. The findings from that study were concluded in August of 2020. And the village still, to its point, wanted to get more information about what a potential consolidation would look like. At that point, the language was being used called, it was called regional. The working group decided to not really continually use that regional language. And the term has been consolidated sewer district. So the sewer working group was formed at the behest of both the town and the village. So they both invited participants, town board and village board members, staff from the town and the village, residents from both entities, and business owners were sought from both entities as well. I was selected as the moderator to be the facilitator, not necessarily the chairman with a vote per se. The group largely came up with the recommendations amongst themselves. I just tried to keep the dialogue moving forward and make sure that there was some sort of progress being made towards the goals the group was charged with. So that being said, the goals the group was charged with were two primary goals in the bullet points that are in front of you. The one was to identify and present to this joint session what was considered at that point in time, the pros and the cons of operating a consolidated sewer system, including treatment and collections. In addition, in this point was one that we took most to heart was present an equitable, feasible, and cost-effective path forward for a consolidated system. What we're not going to necessarily talk about tonight is the working group was not formed to provide a recommendation to the village board on whether or not it should consolidate. So we are not providing a recommendation to the board for that effect. Our recommendations are, should a consolidation be approached in some way, shape, or form, we put forth a path that we thought was equitable, feasible, cost-effective, and fair to both the town and the village. That was our, that was our charge. As part of that charge, in addition to those key goals, there was some what we call scope of work items that were assigned to us. Look at the organizational structure of a potential consolidated district. How is, how could that be organized? What are the precedents taking place in other communities? Debt finance, what, how do you deal with debt in a situation such as this? Review of existing assets and infrastructure, how has that been dealt with, including the collection system? Revenue generation opportunities. And of course, how would this impact potential for future growth within the community? The group met pretty much every other week early on, and then we had held six or seven separate meetings, and then we met pretty much weekly for the last month. The first meeting was in March. I would say that the time schedule for our charge was compressed. I think we had hoped that this could have been facilitated a little bit earlier, but the time constraints that the village is under, not of its own volition, but of the funding sources that it is seeking, has required us to move this forward a little faster than I think all of us would have liked. To that end, we came up with what we thought were some general recommendations. And I'm going to summarize those on the next slide, but this slide talks about the six key topic areas that we're considering. Governance and operations, what options exist for governance and operations of a system where two consolidate into one? Revenue, how do we share those revenue sources? How do we even generate additional revenue? Is there flexibility? Collections, who maintains it? How is that transferred? How is that funded? Infrastructure, operations, maintenance, what happens to the actual land and the buildings? Who continues to own the land and the buildings moving forward? Debt, there's multiple ways to deal with debt, and we'll talk about some conceptual options there. We think there's three. And staffing, how do we treat? And this was, I would say that this last item, number six, was easily the most unanimous sentiment of everybody in that room and that working group felt, how do we treat the village employees fairly and equitably and ensure that they all have jobs and they're all treated as fairly and equitably as possible? It went without saying that everybody in the group felt that that was very important. So I'm going to give a very high level overview of these six areas from the recommendations that we're making, and then we're going to dive into it a little bit further in detail. So number one for governance and operations, the working group felt that the full consolidation of the systems was the most likely going to be the most efficient and effective moving forward. That included both the treatment and the collection systems. And the village in that aspect would have a special district, would function as a special district within a consolidated sewer system. Revenue generation, a sewer reserve fund would be established upfront and both into, for an extended period of time, potentially in perpetuity, to service that village special district. It would be funded by village district users. Those funds would only go towards improvements and investments made within that village, special village district. So those costs would be controlled and constrained to investments required to maintain that existing system. Collections, a consolidated system itself would be actually responsible for the maintenance of the facility and of the collection system. Yet, the, what we discovered in our homework, we actually invited the Executive Director of one of Wayne County's, excuse me, Wayne County's Water and Sewer District to come, and he spoke at length about the efforts that they're undertaking. And one of the models that they suggested that they're using is the authority, that they formed an authority. The authority maintains the district, and then any maintenance above a certain threshold dollar figure is then separately charged back to that special district in which that investment would need to be made. So if there was a pump station that needed to be reinvested in, that pump station investment, which would likely be above the threshold of a nominal figure of $10,000, that's a negotiable number. Anything above and beyond that, that figure would then be charged with, funded by that special district. And that's a way to control costs and protect users of the entire district. Infrastructure, it's recommended that the village's treatment plant would be converted to a headworks-only facility where the primary treatment of the influent, the first blush of treatment would take place, but the final stages of treatment would then be that, that stream of waste would be transferred and flowed down to the town's facility that would need to be improved to handle the extra flow. And the final treatment and discharge of the effluent would take place from the town plant. The land and the buildings would be owned by the village. The village would maintain ownership of all land and buildings. There would be a leaseback of any infrastructure that was being used by the consolidated system. That way, the village would be able to utilize and maintain ownership and potentially construct additional buildings for storage or whatever its, whatever its general needs would be, the village would maintain ownership of those facilities. Debt, there's multiple options, and I'm going to gloss over it now because there's a couple slides in that will talk about the debt options, but the discussion was retiring the debt, consolidating the debt, or just maintaining. So those were really the, conceptually, the three options. And then finally staffing, ensuring that all the village employees are retained and treated fairly in regards to their positions. So in order to be as fair and equitable and efficient as possible, it was recommended by the working group that this take place over a transition period of three to five years. And that transition period, during the transition, there would be a set, determined, likely transition date that would be negotiated, a date as well. But there would be a joint sewer, you know, town and village sewer transition committee that would be formed to help craft an intermunicipal agreement. And then during that transition period, however, the village would be maintained as full autonomy over its sewer system for control, existing budget structure, operations. It would function as, as the entity through the transition period in preparation for transition and consolidation. However, the IME should touch upon those six key elements that we discussed previously, governance, infrastructure, collections, revenue generation, debt and staffing, and there are going to be the other items that get rolled into that. So as part of that consolidated, the transition to consolidation, the recommendations for governance and operations, we touched upon some of them. The formation of the committee, village operating status quo, the formation of village special sewer district during that time period, collections and operations and maintenance charge and a capital charge per, you know, right now, we call them EDU's equivalent dwelling units of town. We measure the flow of sewer based on a 60,000 gallon operation, or 60,000 gallons per year. The, a separate charge would be established, and that would be determined based on the operation of the existing village district. So we would be able to take the time, work with the finance department, work with the sewer department, work with the DPW, and really dive in from a dollars and cents perspective and understand what it takes on a cost per EDU, cost per user, what that charge should really be. To date, we don't know what that charge is. I think the village is heading in that direction, and it's done a lot of work towards determining what that exact charge would be for both the operations and then any sort of capital reserve. And I think the transition period would allow for that process to come to fruition and everybody to feel comfortable with that number. And then one of the suggestions was to actually rename the sewer system to the Webster Consolidated Sewer System, such that even in the branding of vehicles and later had the village residents were part of, not the town, but they were part of a larger community, and it is just the Webster Consolidated System. Dealing with revenue, we get into, we got into a little bit of numbers here when we talked, started talking about revenue. There's several different flows, there's residential flows, commercial and industrial flows, there's septicage flows. We talked a lot about septicage. I know a lot more now about septicage than I probably really want to, but I feel, it's good to, it's good to know how these revenues are generated. So the sewer reserve fund that was mentioned earlier is recommended that that would be started during this transition period by the village. And the village's current financial budget, they've allotted, well, there's an undistributed fund, sum of funds, approximately $374,000, that we felt was obviously intended to build up a reserve fund. And that would continue to take place over, during the transition period. The example on the screen is a period of four years, which would basically provide a reserve fund approaching of getting a half dollars. And then at that point, upon transition, the establishment of that special sewer district within the consolidated system would take place, and that reserve fund would transfer. It would transfer out of the, out of the actual control of the village itself, but it would be set aside and used only for the village users within that district. So those monies would only be used towards offsetting costs for village users. There would be an agreement on the accretion and withdrawal of funds from that reserve to help offset and rebate EDU costs. So if there was, the reserve fund grew to a point where it was unnecessarily large, that money could be then drawn, drawn down in a budget cycle or across budget, budget cycles as a rebate to those EDU users. So the operations and maintenance charge for collections in the village district would be lower than had been. On septicage revenue, there's ideas about how to share that revenue, but if any septicage receiving was undertaken on the village property, those revenues were determined to flow directly to the village as part of the district itself to help offset those EDU charges. So the overall goal was revenue would come in to this special district and would be set aside for village users within this special district and not just consolidated into a townwide fund. It would be specific for village users. And then opportunities for future growth, we went back and forth on how we identify opportunities for future growth, but the screen is, I wish it was larger so you could understand exactly the size and scope of just the area of which the town and village of Webster draw sewer flows. The blue lines up in here is Webster, village, the boundaries are black here. There are potential areas that could be additionally serviced, you know, based on anticipated land use patterns. A consolidated system would allow for that, the servicing of those areas to take place in a more efficient manner, largely because there'd be one entity that could coordinate any changes in pipe sizing if there are bottlenecks in the system, or how do we take out of district charges and pass them through to the appropriate, to the appropriate beneficiary, either being the village district itself or the larger townwide district. Collections, as stated previously, the village would maintain during this transition period 100% of the effort and expense of that, of the system. Post-transition, the funding mechanism for that maintenance and operations would flow through the special district. The effort component would be from the consolidated sewer agency, which would mean the town would be responsible essentially for all the effort moving forward through this, through the combined, what is hopeful to be the combined forces. And then the village residents will pay that separate EDU charge, and that would be specific to the district that they, that they reside in. Infrastructure, just trying to move through this as quickly as I can. The town would complete the system improvements for the treatment plant. The village treatment plant would be converted to the headworks if there was the option for a septicage receiving station at the village, should that be the agreed upon location. Those revenues would then flow to the village as described previously. Village to retain the ownership of the lands, a nominal leaseback, probably even just a dollar, to be honest, a dollar a year, could be more, that's a negotiable term. And then this joint transition committee would establish the investments required during the transition and possibly for a period of five, maybe 10 years. It would be an agreed upon investment in capital across the system. So then budgeting for that could be done upfront, and then those, that budgeting would reflect EDU charges moving forward. And that, the budgeting element would happen in a joint capacity during the transition period. So moving on to debt. We came across three, what we thought were three potential options, and they're all really negotiable options between the town and the village, should this decide, should the village decide to explore this further. Option one could be potentially to even pay off the debt. Some of those funds, some of the reserve fund that was, that was brought forth could be used to retire the debt early so that upon the full, at the end of the transition period, the village could wipe its hands of its, of its debt related to its sewer system by retiring it early, about six years early. Right now, we believe that 30, 2032 is when the full debt would be retired, at least the debt that's on the books today would be retired in 2032. And we estimate that it could be done by 2026. That would come at a cost. Obviously, the cost of paying down that debt early would reduce the amount of funds that you would put into the reserve that would help offset operations and maintenance for the special district. So there's a trade-off in the balance there. So option B would be to have that debt consolidated into the special district. And the reason you set up the special district is because in the eyes of New York State, there is actually a separate entity that could take on such debt, right? So that entity in the village's special sewer district could take on this debt, get transferred into it, that could also take on additional debt, should it need to, should the reserve fund not be sufficient to support unexplained or unanticipated capital investments that were required. The goal is to obviously avoid that and build up that reserve fund, such that would never be the case. And option C would be the village would maintain the debt. Wouldn't have to do anything with it, it could just retire it. It would establish its own additional EDU charge to pay down that debt within a lot of time for, I hope, another approximately 11 years. There's so many different, the reason it's difficult to apply a number of dollar figures like an EDU on that is because right now EDUs are 62.92, next year it could be 6100, and the following year it could be 6,000. We really don't know how large the user base will be within the village to spread these costs across, which is more of the ilk of why a potential consolidation would be preferential and a full perspective, because the unknown risk of a smaller user base over time is something that could be eliminated on the village's part. It could be spread potentially, certain costs, especially if you look at it across the treatment perspective, would be spread across a much larger base of users. And finally staffing, you know, the town and village would essentially have individual agreements with those employees on how they can transition best from the village facility to the town plant based on their accreditation and their licensure, ensuring that they can maintain their compensation and benefit packages. And that, you know, they all keep their jobs. Luckily, we're not talking about 50 to 100 people. Luckily, it's, it's a, it's a number of individuals that have worked hard, and we should be able to protect them moving forward. So just in summary, the six topic areas again, really, this is just the same slide, but these are the six topic areas that we touched upon. Hopefully, we provided some food for thought on how we thought this could be organized. That being said, we are not providing specific recommendations on where we think EDU charges are going to be, or, or the recommendations regarding whether or not the village should consolidate. We think this is a viable option should it take that path. And with that, that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Very much, Matt. Appreciate the work, collaboration that the town and the village participated together in putting this together, doing the research and the study and all the, sincerely appreciate that. Any comments by the board?
I just want to thank the, the working group. I know it was not an easy task, so I appreciate everyone's hard work.
Should we ask any questions?
No attorneys.
Only regular people.
Go ahead, ask.
Where did the $374,000 a year number come from?
It came actually out of the village's 2021 budget. There is an undistributed number, undistributed funding number at the end of that. We pulled that number from there. Obviously, the treasurer is, should be able to provide quite a bit more detail on that.
Would you like to contribute to that?
No. But I thought part of that 374 was going to pay off the loan to the general fund. So it's not really 374, it's less than 3?
Yes, much less.
Okay. Well, according to the documents that we looked at, the 150 that you were going to put towards, at least it was, maybe, maybe you intended on having some of that come, but we thought that there was another 150,000 that was already coming out towards that. Is that, was that the number, 150,000 was going to go towards the general fund?
Yes.
Right, just a straight 150,000?
Yep.
And that was going to happen over the next two years, correct? Correct.
I have lots and lots of questions.
Absolutely.
I don't want to hog the floor. So should I just start and somebody like raise their hand and give them to me?
I'm going to let the mayor decide how he wants to handle this, but I'm here to answer questions to the best of my ability.
If they are specific, then I can answer. Okay. Okay, so I was, I'm curious why the pros and cons did not come to fruition. I was hoping to see those.
Right. So the, the pros and cons, we actually had quite a bit of discussion regarding how do we identify the pros and the cons? And when we go back to, I'll have to get one, I'm going to have to go back all the way so we can look at that slide, but it makes sense to do so so we can read it. The committee spent quite a bit of time in the first, I would say, three meetings where we, we tried to talk about pros and cons of consolidation. And then it became apparent that the committee was, was bogging itself down in trying to identify what it felt was a recommendation, why the board should consolidate or not, why the village should consolidate or not. And we didn't want to make such recommendations. That wasn't truly the charge of the group to make the recommendation. The charge was the second one, to present a fair and equitable, cost-effective plan for a consolidation should the village choose to do so. However, in an effort to not speak around your question, to try and answer it directly, several pros and cons were discussed, and there's actually a report that we're going to hopefully finalize here that will include those elements. Unfortunately, a lot of them were very subjective elements. It was difficult to identify rational, fact-based pros and cons based on the information that we had and the time that we had to collect the information. So there was, rather than us try and debate one another going back and forth on whether or not we thought that was really a pro or that was a con, we tried to move the committee forward because we only had a set amount of time. And I'm just being honest, there was, there was easily room to sit and debate the pros and cons for an entire, we could have done it for 40 hours, but we only met for 60 to 75 minutes at a crack because they were all long tiers. So that's the reason why.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering, you pointed out revenue generation opportunities for the consolidated system. Did you touch on how those might differ from revenue generation opportunities for the two separate entities?
Correct. The revenue generation opportunities were discussed. Obviously, there was, it was felt by the working group that there was, and it was brought up by brought up by a couple of different members of the working group, that there was a potential for competition for revenue, right? And the hope was that that wouldn't take place, that the town and the village wouldn't be competing against one another for septic for things such as that, or to be competing against one another on their rates to attract industrial users. The hope is that we would avoid that and be able to identify ways that should sources of revenue flow through the village, that those could be maintained by the village, like septic receiving at its plant would flow into the benefit of the village. The village would put in that infrastructure, it paid, the village users paid for the debt on that infrastructure, they should benefit from the revenue associated with that infrastructure.
Okay. I believe later in the presentation that it was suggested that the village with the headworks be potentially the sole source of septic processing. Do I have that right?
That's not. That would likely, that would be an agreed-upon element. And whether or not they could, there are limitations associated with, based on legal arrangements, legal requirements. There's a limitation for what sort of waste streams can be, can come into that location, septic versus leachate. There would need to be more analysis of which would make better sense in the long term. Do we anticipate growing flows of septic or lessening flows of septic? Where's the most cost-effective way to accommodate that? There was some on the committee or on the working group that felt the village makes the most sense because of coming in upstream could be mixed with the watery flow from xeroxed, and it would actually be better off for everybody to do it upstream versus downstream. So we did have dialogue regarding that, but time constraints and expertise constraints, of course, came to, came to fruition. We're not the engineers.
Okay. Can you clarify what the advantage would be of the special district? If I understand it correctly, the village would establish this reserve fund and then roll it over to the special district where we would still be managing and controlling it? So can you talk about the...
Conceptually, it was not to be managed or controlled by the village. It would be managed and controlled by the town to be applied, to be applied to the village district alone.
Okay. So I don't want this to sound biased or whatever, but it sounds like the village would be building up this nest egg and then we would turn it over to the town to manage and control?
Well, I think the joint town and village transition team would help establish what the ground rules were for that, for that fund. And then honestly, that committee or that entity, we actually had quite a bit of dialogue regarding how do we maintain village, a level of control and involvement on the part of the village? We've discussed that at length. It was felt that a committee would be established that would help understand how those charges are determined such that the village would have a voice at the table.
Okay.
But that fund is specifically for the geographic boundaries of the village district, so it couldn't be applied to a pump station in the town.
Right. Could you explain a little bit more? You said that there's some entity that can take on, like, I didn't take, I couldn't write fast enough, but one, you said one of the reasons for setting up a special district is that because it's a certain kind of entity that can handle debt in a different way?
So, I mean, the town has special districts already established, so if the town conducts a sewer extension, right, new service to an area that doesn't already have sewer, those users are in their own special sewer district. They will pay for the sewer mains going along the street per household, and they'll also pay the EDU charges that they need that everybody else pays, so they'll pay in addition. So it's similar to that, so debt can be associated with those special districts. So that would be an avenue for the consolidation of that.
Okay. I guess I'm still a little bit stuck on why the village would not just retain its own fund or its own share of the work, but I think that...
I think it could.
...done that enough.
I think it could. I think that's a definitely a point that could be negotiated between the two entities.
Okay. Should I keep going? Okay. I'm not exactly sure how...
You or mine?
Okay.
Fair enough.
Granted. I almost skipped out.
I'm doing my best to appease your questions because I want to, but I don't want to sound as if we have all the answers.
Oh, yeah.
There's so many fine details that would need to be negotiated as part of this, which is why we're suggesting such an extended transition period. We don't want the similar vein that happened with other transitions of other utilities to be done with the flip of a switch, apparently, right? Yeah, that's how it's felt, there's no question about it.
Right.
This should not happen, and that being, an orderly transition should take place and all of these elements should be negotiated.
Okay. Post-transition, the town would be responsible for ongoing maintenance, repair, and service calls? Would the town be committed to providing the same degree of particularly emergency service that the village now provides?
I don't pretend to speak for the town's sewer district, but obviously, the expectation would be that. It's a good question. I don't know how you would measure, how you'd measure commitment level, but that does.
Okay. So for the different treatments of the debt, I think I'm almost done. It looks to me as though in each of these permutations, the village residents are paying the entire debt in each case. Is, am I misreading that?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's everything. Thank you so much for all your hard work, you and the whole group.
You're welcome.
Questions?
General, open it up.
Yes?
Yes. Matt, with respect to the sewer reserve fund, in looking at the budget for the village for next year, on page 19, it has a million-dollar amount showing as the balance, as a deficit. Is that part of this analysis? I mean, you deal with, it's $374,000 a year. Does that number ring a bell?
There are, the in-depth analysis of the village's finances was not undertaken. We didn't undertake, you know, an analysis with such fidelity. The $374,000 number was literally outlined, I didn't think you might have. How the deficits or debts ongoing, and one of the key elements that we didn't necessarily touch upon that's probably missing from this is the costs associated with ongoing retirement, the payment of ongoing retirement benefits into the future, which is a sizable number.
I understand. Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything that we said. Are you referring to the, it's almost 1.5 million deficit as compared to the 36-ish thousand from the year before?
I'm just looking at the document that was posted. It says it's a million-dollar deficit.
There was a recent change in how we are required to report our obligations as far as retirement and pension and health coverage for retirees. So we, formerly, we didn't have to report all of that liability, but now we do. So on our books, it looks horrible, but really, we're in the same position or better as we were the year before.
So these retirement, so these retirement costs, how do they relate to this sewer fund?
They wouldn't change. It's, the only thing with that deficit is that that is, I don't want to say that it's only on paper, but, but it's, it does not represent a debt that the village needs to repay. It's just something that we will owe over many years.
What's included in that debt? How long is that amount of debt?
The 1.5 million?
The 1 million.
It, it isn't money that the village borrowed?
Yeah, it's not, it's not really a debt. It's just, it's the present value of what future retirement costs are going to be. That a couple of years ago, I don't know, the federal and the state government said that every municipality now has to account for that on their balance sheet. If you probably look at the town, they got an even bigger deficit number for future retirement because they have a lot more employees. So it really is a paper debt, it's not real. It gets paid off over time as, you know, you pay, as the retirement system, you know, the village has to make an annual contribution to the state retirement system. It's not like the state's going to say all at once, you have to come up with a million dollars to pay for the next 20 years of your retirees. So it's a little misleading, although, but they're required to show it on the financial statement. Really, I think the sewer fund does not have a fund balance. It's really a zero right now. Okay? And what the village was hoping to start to do with this year's budget was contribute not all of the 374,000, but at least a portion of it to start building up a fund balance again. But it's, right now, it's at zero for the sewer fund.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Please step to the podium.
My name's James Watson. I live over here on Lethal Park in Webster. My family's been here since 1961 in one form or another, living here. And it just seems over time, we get caught up in the politics of the village and the town. I've come in late on this, but I guess my main question is, we haven't heard anything tonight that talks about where you are with the infrastructure and what the maintenance is going to be. Say where the town sewer system is, it exists, we're almost into 2022 budget seasons. Where are you going to be in 2030? How much money is going to need to be put into the town versus the condition of the village sewer system as it is now, and how much is going to be, have to put into that by the village residents? Or are the village going to become a facilitator and funder of maintenance of the town? And that would be my biggest concern. In the eight years we've been here, our taxes have gone up 225% in eight years. So what impact is this going to have on the village residents and the taxpayers of the village if we're put in a position of a subway? And I don't know the condition. Maybe the town sewer system is better than the village at this point. But we haven't heard anything about the maintenance and what the perspective is going to be in the, in the future of maintenance and upgrades over the next eight years and who's going to bear the cost of those. Because once the village moves into it, you're going to become an equal partner, I would assume, in the ownership of maintaining the larger sewer system. I'd like to hear that, or at least have the board consider that before you get in over your heads and all of a sudden it comes back and flows backwards to the taxpayers of the village. Thank you.
That kind of dovetails into a question I get from you, Matt. It seems to me, so the sewer rent, you know, you propose it'll include a charge for collection, operation, and maintenance and capital, right? Whether it's the special village district or the town district. So it would seem to me, isn't the concept that the O and M charge would be identical for the village and the town, right? Because that's basically the consolidated plan.
So that the charges towards the treatment components would be identical?
Right.
The charges towards the collection systems would be separate?
But, and then you talked about this threshold above which the village would have to pay extra. So is the threshold, is the concept that this threshold is going to be whatever the cost is to the town to maintain its collection system? Because just the same, the town has 20-some odd pump stations, the village has, what, seven, three?
Three.
The odds are that there's going to be more expense maintaining town pump stations than village pump stations. If the town pump station goes, why shouldn't, why should village taxpayers pay for that if town taxpayers aren't paying for the repair of a village?
I don't think the concept was that they would.
Yes, and well, that's what you said in your presentation. You used, you used the pump station as an example. In the collection system, you said, you said that...
The collection system is from a financial perspective, we're considered that they could be separated.
Yeah, but this threshold has to be, like, you got to use...
That's on the, that's on the maintenance perspective. So lining up the pipes, cleaning up, you know, working with cleanouts, doing things on a daily maintenance perspective? That would be done as part of, and the example was what is done in the town. That would be done with one...
So, but, but for example, so if this regular, in the town, just in the town, if they incurred something in their collection system above and beyond these regular maintenance charges, who pays for that? Is everybody, town and village?
You'll have to forgive me, we were touching on this over here. Was that in the, you're talking about an expense in the town consolidation system?
Yes.
I think the effort of separating the two out was to protect both town and village users. So the village users would continue to be responsible for the maintenance of the consolidation, the collection system within the existing network.
And the town would be solely responsible for the collection system outside of the village?
As far as, as far as the improvements would go.
Well, not just improvements, but it seems to be the town then, to be fair or to be the same, any expenses above this threshold of regular maintenance, whether it's in the town or the village. If it's in the village, the village pays for it, if it's in the town, the town pays for it.
I would agree that, I would agree that would make sense.
Okay. So it's just a little different. Well, it's just not included in...
There's probably a lot of questions that need to be answered. That's a good point you brought up.
Real quick, you mentioned Wayne County.
The impression is that I have all the answers in that.
Oh, I know, I know.
And that we've come up with a final, a final agreement. This is not, the, the elements of this transition and this agreement between the town and the village, we just touched upon six conceptual areas that we felt were the ones that should be highlighted.
Well, I feel like...
The litany of questions that are out there, and I'm sure you could bring up a zillion more, and I'll do my best to answer them, but...
I just want to be able to understand it on a macro level, just so that if the village board has any questions, I can help them try to answer it between now and, I guess, two weeks when they got to make a decision.
I hope, Matt, that I made it clear when I was grilling you that, no, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what you were presenting and if there were any thoughts behind that that you could share. But, you know, clearly, I don't expect you to have answers. That wasn't your job.
And Marshall, a lot of the questions you're asking, which are great questions, I think Matt alluded to during that time period of the two to three years this takes is when all those things would be talked and all of it decided. Maybe what Don is saying is perfectly the way it could go, but you just don't know that now. And that's not giving us that direction. I think he was pretty clear that that's not what this work we were doing.
I just have a question. And to the record, I do expect you to have all the answers, Matt. The, you mentioned Wayne County a couple of times as an example. Do you know what their rates are or their success with this facility and what do their residents pay?
You mean on an EDU perspective?
Yes.
I mean, they mentioned what they'd be on an EDU, per EDU perspective, but their EDU numbers are significantly lower. So the cost to put in a system, any system, there's a... So the cost to put in a system, any system, there's a, a, a base level cost. But I do believe that, uh, both town and village are performing exceptionally below what we would consider normal EDU charges across the state. EDU charges in some municipalities could be, you know, five, $500 or more in some areas, over in, in, in Albany, they're in excess of a thousand or three. So it's to be commended that the town and the village can, can provide the services that they do and the cost that they do. That being said, we're so affordable that it's almost preferable for us to, how inexpensive it is for us to maintain our services.
You, you- Yeah. Just to, to fill in just a little bit, uh-
Thank you, sir.
Matt is correct. And right now, there in, in Wayne County, the charges are at $500 and they're going up. Right now, we're at, I believe, like, around 195 to 192 for EDU, EDU charges, okay? So relatively inexpensive at this point in time. The way they're set up over there is, is that they've taken five different communities and they've combined them all into one main treatment facility or possibly two, two facilities for treatment. And everybody takes care of, uh, in some instances, the authority takes care of their systems. In other areas, the municipality takes care of their systems. The ceiling you were talking about a moment ago, they have it roughly set at 10,000. Okay, so say, let's say, for instance, in Marion, they have a pump station that they have to rebuild completely. They will pay up to the 10 thou, or 10, uh, 10 billion, oh, no, 10,000, I'm sorry, is the ceiling. Anything above that, then they, the, the authority would come in, take care of it, and then those char, extra charges above that would then go back to the municipality solely, not the whole district, but just back to the municipality. That then they would either take it out of their reserve funds or they would have to be billed for that, and their rate may be a little bit higher. Okay? So it's, it, it's a system in which everything is negotiated. Once everything's negotiated, there's a whole set of rules that everybody plays by, okay? It's not that one entity, uh, does one thing and somebody else pays for it. If you have, something happens to go wrong, that area takes care of it. And if it exceeds their limits, then there's extra charges that will be put onto the EDUs, okay? So it's, it's an, and it turns out to be an equitable type of arrangement where, uh, the whole district, the only time that the whole district pays for something is if something needs to be done either by a mandate by the, the D E C or the higher, higher authority has to be done at the plant, and that goes into your overall EDU, EDU charges, okay? Does everybody understand that?
Dave, say your name.
Who, me?
Thank you.
My name's Dave Galliasso. Uh, yeah, had the honors of, uh, serving this community for 35 years, so I have a little bit of interest and involvement, uh, so. This is going down like this, so you can hear me? No, it goes up here. But again, uh, there, we did a, we, we did a lot of different things and looked at a lot of different things, and what it boils down to is, uh, like everything else, comes down to economics and somebody's gotta make a decision. That's the bottom line, guys. Okay? I'm done.
So Matt, Matt, one last question.
Fire away.
And as Dave said, Wayne County uses, um, an authority-
An authority.
Much like Pure Waters is an authority in Monroe County. Did you consider establishing an authority to run the consolidated system rather than it being under the control of the town? And if you rejected an authority, how come?
Our, our research included, um, there's authorities that are formed, um, there are local development corporations that are formed, there are separate consolidated sewer districts, um, that are formed, there's a, probably three primary, those would be the, the three primary mechanisms. Did we, why, why did we not choose the authority as, as the final recommendation? I think the sentiment of the, of the group was that that level of complexity was unnecessary for the number of parties involved being just, just the town and the village. So we felt that there was no need to create a whole separate governance entity, um, a whole another layer of government. We felt it could be done without that, that level of complexity.
Follow up on that, I guess. You discussed in the, um, the town, here the village is a special district, and then you describes, you described special districts within the town that they use for extensions or for capital improvements that are specific to one site. But if the improvement went out 30 years ago and again, the debt is settled on that in the town, as I've talked about, they still have a fee for collections as part of the regular fee, and then the special district's fee would be something on top of the regular treat, heroin and M cost for treatment and collections is, is mixed in with that. So from a village resident's standpoint, if we're a special district in terms of collection and the town for this consolidated, uh, sewer, um, plant, or sewer, uh, entity had an issue with part of the collection system, those funds would come out as what the normal non-special district fees would be, right? So the village resident would pay for their own collection system, but then also collect part of, portion of stuff that happens within the town and those special?
No, I think that's what Don was, was trying to get at, is where it would, there would be a line in the sand, obviously, that special district fund, conceptually, as we described, still conceptual, lots of things to be ironed out. Those, the reserve fund would be established for the village's collections district. And those funds would get used solely towards the village collections district. So the village should not pay for improvements to the collection system on apple growth, right? If there's a sewer break there, it should be paying for, you know, a sewer break only on F and R track, right?
So what I'm saying, you have-
And the intention is naturally, it's a protection for both the town and the village. It's easily, it, it's easy for the, this body to think about, how is it protecting us? But I think that from the town's perspective, the town ratepayers are also gonna wanna understand how they're protected from expenses incurred in village infrastructure. So the goal is to try and draw that, that separation and identify a funding, a funding mechanism, where how do we, how do we gather those funds and then allocate those funds?
Yeah, which is, for example, I agree now, the town rate is 167 for O and M, I guess 23 for capital. And 167 for O and M covers the collection system and treatment at the plant, and the capital will be in the debt service for those things. If you live in an area where there was a recent extension or a capital improvement, that would be, part, that would be where the special district would come in and pay for those.
And there would be, obviously, the charge would be higher than the 193.
Right, absolutely. So if you get that core 167 for operation and maintenance, that would have to be separated out for treatment component, the collection component to the town.
Correct. So the village is only paying for the treatment component?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep. The town would have some rejiggering of its EDU charges to do as well, to make sure that it was equitably only charging the village ratepayers worth of, on the, the-
The consolidated sewer treatment, the sewage would then effectively take two entities to make three. The town collection, the village collection, and the combined consolidated treatment.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jake. I think if you use the Wayne, if you use the Wayne County analogy-
I think you're using the term any loosely, but it's a, it's a one agency.
Well, right, but, but if you use Wayne County, the town would actually be wearing two hats. They would be sitting as the authority, because you don't wanna, you said, you didn't feel you needed an authority, but they'd still be like the town of Marion, too. If something happened with them, you know, there's five towns, well, you know, the town of Webster should also, the town residents, as Jake said, they should have to pay for improvements and/or repairs above the ordinary for its collection system, just as the village residents would do within the village, to be fair. May I ask you a question?
I see what you're, I see what you're saying, and I think you're bringing up a valid distinction that would need to be made, to make, to make it fairly equitable.
Yeah, that's a-
Another element of the hat, it's been trying to get up there.
Oh, well, you go first.
And then we'll let you.
My comment is quick. I'm Bruce Winters, I'm a, uh-
My name is Bruce Winters, I'm a resident in the village.
My comment is quick with regards to the comment about authorities. Um, if authorities can be avoided, my personal opinion is they ought to be avoided. All you have to do is look around New York State at the thruway authority, the power authority, et cetera, and essentially what they can become, don't have to become, are little fitem's that are basically unaccountable to the taxpayer.
Yeah, my, my only reason I brought up the authority is, and this is a concern that the village board should have, if, if, you know, if, if it's the town that basically, it'd be the town board that would control the budget for the consolidated sewer plant. And how would the village have any input in that if it weren't an authority?
The, the, the effort was suggested as part of the working group that that, that we would be able to avoid that via, uh, we talked, when we talked about, we created that, that worked, the, essentially that committee, right? It was a joint town-village.
It was all being done through a intermunicipal agreement.
Right.
But we would have, there would be, in that three to five year period, there would be a, a group of individuals that would be representative of town, village, uh, residents, uh, commercial people and business people that would be involved in making decisions and making, uh, uh, finding out what costs and what needs would need to be done to not only the, our district, but, uh, the town district as well, as to what maybe improvements would need to be done at the, uh, the town plant. They would be all together and be able to discuss what the needs are so that there would be a level playing field for the costs. Because it wouldn't necessarily be being done at all at one time, it would be done over a period of time, the information would be spread. And again, we didn't wanna get into any kind of an authority, because we already realized what the issue is with an authority. So that's why we wanted to do it with all intermunicipal agreement if possible.
Right, so the I R A would be crafted by this joint town, we, would be, the drafting of it would be assisted by this, the formation of this joint town-village committee, make committee, and, and the, the tenure of that committee could be just during the transition period, or it could be decided that some entity to ensure that there's proper, um, voice for both parties that are being heard into the decisions for this consolidated system. That was the, the mechanism. It wasn't, it wasn't in a formal method where there would be an authority with, with a board and an executive director and a whole separate level of, of government that would be above and beyond what it would normally take. We thought that could be done, I think it should be a little bit more of a parochial level with the, with the, through the, the I M A. But you have a good point about control, interest, how do we, how do we provide feedback and interest and have some level of accountability, holding everybody accountable towards these costs along too?
Yeah, it goes beyond three to five years, I'm probably, you know.
Well, I mean, obviously, right, the transition is this period where we determine these mechanisms. There's certain things that are gonna outlive the transition, and it's likely that mechanism would need to be one of them. I know you don't agree.
No, I agree, I'm just trying to, I'm not so sure a contract is the proper mech, mechanism to ensure that the village has a voice in, 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 in-
Perfect, that's a perfect, that's a perfect-
In operating the town.
That's a perfect negotiating point during the, the agreement between the town and the village.
We're saying we're gonna buy the power before we know what the deal is. We're gonna say, yep, that's the power we want, now let's go in and tell me how much I'm gonna pay.
No. I'm just, I'm just saying, I like-
I mean, if you really know the full cost, yeah, I think there's a lot of-
Well, no, forget about, forget about the costs. I just, I just think people maybe shouldn't just throw the authority idea out the window because of bad experiences with the New York State thruway authority and the New York power authority. Those are, you know, that's on a level that we're not even approaching. And couldn't this authority, the board of directors of the authority be, you know, three, three, three town board people and two village board people?
Absolutely, and you could-
And so you're not, you're not dup, you're, you're not creating, in essence, you're really not creating another level of government. Maybe it's on paper only, but at least it-
The responsibilities in the government's eye for authorities are pretty extensive. A, a local development corporation, similar to the Alliance, is, is exactly what the, the Alliance is.
Well, if a local development corporation can run us through a treatment plan, okay, I'd be open to that idea.
It could own, it could, they, they can own, they can, they could, they can operate. It could be, it could be an L D C, they do that in other locations. I think down in the ethnic area, they're choosing that.
Well, that may, that may make sense.
The L D C route is, they're choosing that down.
But you'd still, so the L D C would have a board of directors that would consist of village and town or given?
Yep. Absolutely.
You just got where we're coming from.
I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Okay.
Everything is open for debate.
Yes, sir.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Byers. You mind if I make a few comments?
All right.
Okay. Well, first I should state my name. I'm Tom Flaherty, a proud resident of the community of Webster, uh, though I guess my home for the last 20 years, 24 years has been in the town of Webster. I will say that until I became supervisor a year and a half, I really was not aware of, uh, just how tribal, uh, the village of Webster is versus the town of Webster. But I've gotten quite an education in the last 18 months, and since I'm a historian, it's been, it's been interesting. But I will take up a lot of, uh, the citizens' time tonight. I do appreciate everything that the, uh, committee, the special work group, uh, did on this. Uh, it's been pleasant for me to get to meet Dave Galliasso, and Dave, to watch how you were very open-minded, from what I've heard, um, and came up with some of the good ideas for the global way to handle it. I've gotten a chance to work with Don White, and I'd like to thank Don. Uh, your questions, counselor, are great tonight. You are representing your client. Um, I'll let you decide if in good faith you think the town has operated in good faith with you on certain I M As on the 12 million dollar phase one. With that being said, I just wanted to mention a few things. Um, I call it putting 800 pound gorilla on the table. So these are five things that I think that I just wanna make sure that, um, this is just my opinion, I think these are, these have been spun or they are missed, in my opinion. Number one is that this is a village decision. The reality is, this is both a town board decision and a village, a village board decision. Now, it's been spun, I think, that it's a village board decision because they have this, um, $5 million interest-free loan that they gotta make a decision on. But the reality is, since this all started four or five years ago, or at least when I walked in the door a year and a half ago, the rules of engagement were basically handed to me that, well, this is how it works. You keep your collections, you keep your debt, and we'll talk about employees. And the day I heard that, as an accountant and somebody who didn't have a dog in the fight of tribalism, I said, well, I'm not married to that. I'm open-minded, I wanna look at facts. And so as the facts were presented out, I became open-minded and I tried to say to Mayor Byers and Deputy Mayor, uh, Ippolito, that I thought there was opportunities to have some of that debt be consumed or taken on by the consolidated system, especially the stuff associated with the headworks. Um, as you can see from the recommendation of this working group, it has collections being consolidated. 18 months ago, that was not on the table. So you have four town board members over here that, I know this was the first time I've seen this, contrary to popular belief. So I don't know if they- So I don't know if they are going to decide to go with these terms. So I appreciate that all the village board members and DPW and the village attorney have asked questions tonight that make it sound as though the village is being run by the town. But the reality is, this is a very different set of circumstances that were just shown than the town board previous had looked at. This will end up being a joint decision of the town board and the village board. Myth two. The town is trying to balance the budget on the backs of the village citizens. Mr. Watson, you kind of alluded to that as one of your concerns.
No, sir. I never talked about the town budget. Never talked about the village budget. I talked about the infrastructure and not knowing what the next eight or nine years of repair work and upgrades to respective systems were going to be, and it's how that's going to be.
And then as the questions went around, it was very obvious to anybody who English is their first language, it's a very good concern. As an accountant, as a numbers guy, if the village makes up 30%, and I'm making up a number, the town makes up 70% of whatever, and it ends up in this, that the agreement, that the town only has to pay 60%, the village pays 40%, that's awful. That is the village getting ripped off by the town, and that's something that I wouldn't advocate for in a million years. So where this working group basically came out with a global recommendation to put together a committee or whatever you want to call it, to work out the fine details, I think something missing here tonight is that a lot of your questions are to match for those fine details. Those aren't there. Now, Jake, you used the term that, well, it's like buying a car without seeing it all that. I couldn't hear you anymore. But the reality is, is that we, the town, jumps into that same risk. So we would have to sit down and make sure that it is fair and equitable. That's my compass of decision-making. The third myth, well, actually, I should say this, because it sticks with the second myth of the town trying to pull one over. The village board up here represents approximately 5,000 constituents. They're voted by the village residents. 5,000, approximately. The town of Webster is approximately 46,000 citizens. That town board and myself as the supervisor get voted by them. Mr. Watson, did you vote for the supervisor and the town board members?
I didn't vote for either.
Do you have the ability to vote for them?
I'm a resident in Florida. I was over in San Diego.
Boy, did I? He's not my straight man. I'll tell you that, is he, okay? All right? So actually, we shouldn't listen to him because he doesn't live here in the village, you just said. Who's a village resident who votes? Because he's not going to play with me. When you go to the voting booth in 19 and 21, does your voting thing have for town board members and supervisor? It does, because your 5,000 citizens of the village are constituents of the town. Now, I want to make sure everybody understands something. I see the supervisor position, and I certainly see the town board positions, as a stewardship fiduciary position for our 46,000 constituents. The 5,000 constituents in the village are not second-class citizens in my eyes. I want to make sure that they're taken care of fair and equitably, just like the 41,000 citizens in the town. They're my constituents too. Myth three. I love this one. The village sewer plant and system is better than the town's system. Well, the reality is, they're different. Currently, they're different. First of all, 85% of the flow into the town's system is residential. And without getting into technicalities, like you said, of septicage, Matt, residential is your toilets. So the heaviness of what gets processed at our plant is more so than 85% of the village's flow is commercial, of which 56% of the village's flow is from Xerox, and it's mostly a watery thing. Well, I'm not a scientist, but I will tell you what I have learned, that it is easier and more efficient to process water through a sanitary sewer than to process the solids that come from our residential toilets. So, yeah, I guess if you want to go by the fact that it's more efficient, the village sewer, well, right now, what's feeding into the village sewer is easier to process, today, 2021. Also, part of being better, when I was here in August, or when we did a Zoom meeting, was that financially, if the EDU charge of the town is $187, and the EDU charge of the village is $150, well, then obviously, financially, the village must be better than the town. That's what was said to be back in August. I mean, how can $150, which is so much less than $187, it's got to be better, right? Well, here's the reality. The village is just in the infancy stage of figuring out a sewer fund and not having all of their sewer finances run through their general fund. I don't say that to take a shot at the village. I'm saying it as a fact. And within that process, I think the first time they had an EDU rate on the tax bill for the citizens of the village was approximately four years ago, something like that, and it started out as $98. Is that correct? And this year, for 2021-22, it was raised from $150 to $195. Now, the village EDU rate for citizens is now $195. The town is $192. So should I argue that the town sewer plant is better than the village? I wouldn't do that, because I would be a one-trick pony basing that on a factor that is just one factor of multiple when it comes to what is better. And I want to say one last time. The village sewer plant, and there are approximately 7,000 EDUs flowing through today, is approximately 85% commercial, the majority of that being Xerox. I think, Mr. Chamberlain, your businesses make up the second, maybe biggest, commercial. The town has 17,000 EDUs, but 85% of them are homes. Myth number four, I've only got two to go, all right? Not going hogged all the time, is that the myth of the future, that the village is better to stay on their own and they have a $5 million interest-free loan, and they're going to need some more money than that, I'm sure everybody knows, for this first round of asset replenishment. Well, the reality is, is that, do you realize, and I want to make sure everybody thinks about what I ask to say, they really have an open mind to this. Every person I have talked to that doesn't have the Hatfield-McQuay, Town of Webster, Village of Webster, 50 years' background of whatever reasons that's happened, people at the D E C, people in Albany who do the funding and the grants, unsolicited by me, and say, why would a 35-square-mile community, a 46,000 citizens, consider in 2021, putting X million dollars into this plant and another X million dollars into this plant? It makes no sense. That's what everybody outside of the 35-square-miles thinks. The granting opportunities from the various state agencies, they incentivize consolidation. That's a fact. But here we are, and I understand why, having this discussion about potentially putting in $8 million, $10 million into a village plant in the next two years, and the town's already put $12 million into Phase One of their plant, and we're about to venture into Phase Two of putting another however many million dollars in. Well, here's the thing. And I like to break down as an accountant, I learned over the years, when I go to financial presentations, accountants get up there, and they're not really good at presenting, because they present in their language, and laymen can't understand it. So over the years, I've learned how to basically describe things that we can come back to our own personal family budgets. The village has approximately a $3 million annual budget. Is that correct, Mayor? $3 million, all right? Does everybody know what that means? The village brings in $3 million of revenue, a lot of it from sales tax, some of it from real estate taxes that are to the village residents. With that $3 million of revenue, they provide the services that the village does to the commercial business and the residents, including a sewer. If the village goes into debt $8 million, whether it's got a 0% interest rate or a 1% interest rate, it is tantamount to the town of Webster, who has a $35 million budget annually, going into debt about $90 million. Did everybody understand that correlation? Let's go to that car thing, Jake. So your daughter makes 20 grand a year, okay? And she wants to buy a $100,000 Maserati and go into debt for it. Well, let's say you make 200,000 a year, and I hope you don't, Jake, because if we consolidate, that's a lot of money we're going to have to take in. Who is more apt to want to be approved for the 200,000-dollar debt? His daughter making 20 grand a year or him making 200,000 dollars a year? It's a simple question, because we all know the answer. The village, going into an $8 million loan on their own, in a plan right now to basically replace 1970 technology with the same technology, but a 2020 model, and then the plan is, that LaValle has done with the village, is that then in about seven years, they'll do Phase Two of that for another however many million. That would concern me, as the supervisor of the town and the 5,000 constituents, that I take a lot of responsibility to make sure that things are done for their benefit. As an accountant, based on those finances, that concerns me. Now, during this process, I got a chance to meet Marsha Evans, who is the village treasurer. And tonight, when, and I don't remember which gentleman it was, said, what about that million-dollar deficit? And Marsha, I try to be fair. I don't spin things. I looked at you and said, you can answer that, can't you? Because we talked about this the other day. It's not a million-dollar deficit. It's really more of a break even, maybe even $100,000 surplus. But the reality is, the town, on their audit and financial statements for their sewer fund, has, in their last audit and financial statements between their sewer reserve and their fund balance, has $6.1 million. The village, as I said before, is at about a zero. If that is the comparison, a $35 million entity, agency, a government agency budget, that has a $6 million surplus that has been built up over managing it correctly over the years, and the village has a $3 million budget, really still figuring out how to do their sewer fund separately from their general fund. I don't mean that as a shock. It's just a reality. And now you're going to go into, on your own, $8 million in debt.
I should have brought my hip boots.
That concerns me as the supervisor for the 5,000 constituents that I represent. And that leads me to my last myth. If you've been reading letters to the elders, if you've been on social media, if you take the door hangers that certain people go around in the village, the town, and I guess I represent the town, is a bully. And we're trying to force our way, go back to myth one, because we want to screw the village. We want to take advantage of them. Well, the reality is this. I want to protect the village. I want to protect the 5,000 constituents that are people that vote for me and voted me to be a fiduciary steward of them. And so if it's come across as being a bully, that maybe I'm halfway up the mountain yelling, have you looked at this? Have you really looked at this with open eyes? Have you looked at, when I hear that they're saying, well, we'll get 200,000 in septicage. We'll have Chamberlain come over and we'll start septicage again. Well, I just said to you, the village is building a plant that unless something's changed, mobile engineers is just asset replenishing. The town's plant, which I hope is our community's plant, is going to build state-of-the-air technology so that the septicage that comes in is so light when it comes out, it's like coffee pellets, that we have no cost or very minimal cost to sludge hauling. Now, my predecessor is here tonight, so he can corroborate this. Sludge hauling. In 2019, Supervisor Nesbit got up on the podium during the budget process, I should say it was in, yeah, 2019, and he said, let me tell you one of the reasons why the budget is going up next year for the town. The $250,000 cost to haul away the rest of that septicage, the solids, is going to $500,000. The reason of that double is because, well, this'll shock everybody, the landfills around that take that, they're closing. And then the one that we go to right now is closing in 2026. And this'll shock you. There's not a lot of communities out there that are pining to open a new landfill. So we're looking at this because we're taxed, no pun intended, as leaders, to be visionary, and look into our due diligence and see that and say, you know what? We're going to be held hostage to this sludge hauling in years to come. By 2026, if we got to haul this stuff 500 miles away, that can cost $2 million a year. So we're going to build where we will dry that out. Now, unless I've missed something, I have not heard that the town's asset replenishment has looked into that technology. So you're thinking they're going to take $200,000 of septicage as a village-only plant. But the reality is, it's just basic economics. We're going to have this plant that has septicage dried out to where there's no cost, and if we have no cost to haul it, and the village's plant has cost to haul it, don't you think we're going to be able to charge less for that? So the village will end up getting no revenue from that. Now, does that mean we're a bully? I loved this idea of consolidating the septicage and the revenue sharing. It's fantastic. That's what we should be doing. I want the village, I want the village residents, I want village commercial businesses to benefit from that state-of-the-air technology that we're going to put on that community campus. Because that state-of-the-air technology, in my opinion, and I go back to what I said about being visionary, not tying yourself into the past, and the past Hatfield-McQuay and all that stuff of the village and town. Because when Xerox's campus, that 800-acre campus, which has, you may or may not know, has 4 million of its 6 million square feet of buildings is empty, 4 million is empty. Here's the trend of Xerox the last 15 years. Xerox is 56% of the village sewer plant's EDU flow. Is that correct?
It's amazing you know these numbers, but not how much it'll cost our village residents. We still, after four years, don't know how much it'll cost our residents. That's remarkable.
Well, I know this. I know this, that when I'm starting with Jake, and this comes down to the bully thing, this is. down to the bully thing, and this is what, and I was in a meeting with Marcia the other day, and with Paul Adams, our finance director, and I said, "What I'm really concerned about is that as the supervisor of this town, this community, who oversees even the 5,000 citizens in the village, I personally think that $8 million of debt, whether it's interest-free or not, the interest rates are so low, the delta, the difference between an interest rate and a zero-interest rate loan, is not going to make that big of a difference to the fact of, are you overburdening yourself? So, as I said to Marcia and to the crew, once I had that realization, then the real problem comes up is, well, now, if we do consolidate, how do I advocate and work with the crew to make sure that we're not making it so advantageous to the village, because I want to, I want to protect them, that we're doing it on the backs of the town? Think about that, because it's got to be fair and equitable. And the whole time, everybody saw the fair and equitable, is that the town's trying to pull one over on the village. From my feelings is, to make this work, so that the village stays as a village government, and we'll get into the sixth myth, nobody in the town wants the village government to go away. Nobody wants that. The town board is not going to be the one that ultimately would make the village as a separate entity go away. As I've looked in the last 20 years at certain villages around New York State that have gone away, it's not because the bigger entity that they were in, the town or the city, made them go away, it was that village's actions or lack thereof that made it such that they all of a sudden were insolvent, and the bigger entity had to come in and take it over, and I want to make sure everybody understands something on that. If and when that ever happens, it's not going to be the 40,000 town people that will spread that problem over, it will be a village district. And that would sadden me, because I think there's an opportunity today, in 2021, to have the vision to sit down and get this done between these two government agencies. And that's the one thing that, that you said, that when this group was giving the guidance. The one unique aspect to this, when you brought in the guy from Wayne County, when you had people call other consolidations around the state in the last 10 years, the one missing commonality is that in all of those consolidations, you had two or three or four municipalities' leadership that had the vision to know, "We need to do something, we need to get together, sit at the table, to get this done." And I just, I guess, I've been here 18 months now, and I still, I just can't get it, we're not at that point yet. Look at this meeting tonight. Everything about body English and facial expressions show that you don't want any part of this. And I just don't understand that, because I'm very concerned that if you don't open your eyes to some of these things, that the future, in indebted a village, a $3 million annual budget for $8 million today, and then in seven years, another $8 million? I really think that is going to be problematic, because if you have an event that costs $500,000 or $1 million bucks, you don't have the reserves to go and get, so you're going to go borrow it. I was in the mortgage business for 25 years. People would come and borrow money from me, and then they'd come again in two years to borrow and refinance. And then it'd get to a point where they'd come to borrow, and we'd say, "We can't lend you anymore." That's my concern, is that if you operate in this on your own, without us teaming up to do what's good for the whole community, fair and equitable, to the town residents and the village residents, and then, as I said, parlaying that, so we as a team move on to that Xerox campus, and start doing the things I've said to you, Darrell, splitting the lines out of the middle of buildings, working on the roads so we can start moving that campus, that's going to, that's going to need teamwork out of the village government and the town government. That's just a fact. And I can assure you this, if we move the needle on that, everybody in this community, community, town and village, will benefit, because instead of 4 million square feet of empty space, you'll get new industry over there, 21st century industry, that when they look at what we built over on Phillips Road as a community sewer plant with a campus also over a wall in 250, it has the technology to take some of this new age industry that has discharge, that is in Xerox water, it's maybe thicker and whatever, but that's going to tax this type of technology where you're just replacing 1970 stuff with 2020. And that's why the town is trying to get ahead of that with visionary technology at this plant, and I really hope that that's for the whole community, not just for the town plan. Because if it is just for the town plan, because the town will move on, we will move on to a town plan, it's very obvious that that is the best thing to do. I would be very saddened if it's not with the village.
Are you saying, if the town, if the village board doesn't support the goal with consolidating sewer, if you won't support the Xerox efforts or any efforts over...
See, Jake, don't put words in my mouth, all right? Don't put words on my mouth. The reality is this, and you're not a spring chicken, okay? You can't sit there, at our age, we're at a pretty similar age, all right? So I'm not a spring chicken either. You can't sit here and have this type of non-team orientation, all right? And then all of a sudden snap our fingers and we walk over to Xerox, and everything's going to be great, and we're going to be a team.
I think there are different efforts, and if one makes sense and one doesn't, we look for the greater community and do what's right for the community. That's my point.
So let me ask you something, Jake.
If I can, real quick, some of the efforts you're talking about, the strength, you've obviously educated yourself on the strength of waste, and you understand that. So, or town waste is right here, and say it's 15, whatever units you want to call them, it's 15, and the village's 10, town waste is stronger. The town has three times the flow as the village, so there's 45. For every million gallons here, there's 45 units here, and there's 10 units here. You put them together, it's 55 units. That's 13 and 3/4 average. So the village would go from 10 to 13 and 3/4, the town would go from 15 down to 13 and 3/4. It's going to cost the village more.
Jake, and I'm going to say this again, Marcia, you remember when I was sitting in that meeting, and I said, "I'm trying to figure out how do we get the most advantageous index of fair and equitable?" What you just described, Jake, is you're like, "See what you guys are going to do? So you put your heavy stuff in, so you can jam it down the village?" And what, I'm trying to do the exact opposite.
Back and forth.
And be honest with me, you, I'm not going to sit there and try to jam accounting down your throat. I don't have Rip Canelli and our sewer people here today to talk about that stuff.
Oh, this one's got accounting things.
But no, no, that is a flow, that's a weight, and all that stuff. So, you know...
I just have a question.
Tom.
We need to move on.
Yeah, I'm ready to go. As far as, you don't have a question for me, right? Okay, thank you.
I don't know about that.
Go get him, Peter.
Peter Elder, 15 Dunning Avenue. Supervisor, I respect you a lot, I really do, and I've worked with you and I continue to respect you and what you do, but I have to tell you that I would not characterize this village board the way you did. I believe their body language is exactly the opposite, you said. I see them as being open, I see them as listening, I see them as engaged, and I've known them for a long time, each and every one of them. I can go down and tell you how long I've known them. I've known a lot of the town board members also for even longer time. So I guess my read of their body language is different. I see them as being, like, you know, very, they listen to the issues, they've decided the issues, I know they're talented people, they're experienced, and they lead this village. So I just want to say that I didn't like that part of your presentation, because I like your skills, I like all of your skills, I like all of their skills. And I think you should all be complimented for being here tonight, listening to this combined presentation. I also want to assure you that having been here to many village board meetings over the last 20-some years, this board has a very, very good idea of how to separate their general fund and their sewer fund. We went through this four years ago. Our former mayor, Mayor Cahill, actually went to great lengths, and I actually have minutes and notes on this, to explain how it was done. He did excellent research on how to divide these two funds. I very much believe this board has a very good idea about how to do that, just so you know. And I still think the issue with tonight comes down to, we're no closer to understanding costs. We have a lot of good presentations, and this presentation is similar to and reflects one that we had not long ago in terms of its vision, but the thing we don't have is cost. And to my mind, just as I would approach a town resident about cost, I would ask you about cost, I would ask the mayor about cost, I think cost is a huge issue for our village residents. What is the bottom line of this cost to our residents? So you also first the idea of risk, and I just wanted to address that as well. I realize that there is a discussion about, and you're absolutely right, you know, you look at Xerox over the last several years, it has been a declining issue, but I don't know that that's necessarily fate. It also could go, it also could be an inclining issue at some point, where the village is able to take advantage of that, because we have 2/3 of the Xerox's campus. And I very much hope the town can take that whole prosperity as well. So I realize it's one thing to say that it's going to keep going down, or could go down, but it also could be a recovery. You could see a blossoming of that campus, and not just because of the village board, because of all the work the two boards got through together. And I guess the final thing I would kind of say is this, the town and the village get along really well. I guess I wouldn't really characterize it as tribal. I don't, I don't, again, I've been, I've been involved in government since 1989, ran for the first, my first office in 1993, and you can do the calculation, I was pretty young, and so, and all that time, you know, what I have actually seen is the opposite. I've seen trucks shared, services shared, I have seen intermunicipal agreements done, I've seen exactly the opposite of tribalism, I've seen cooperation. Now, of course, there's controversy between governments, I suppose maybe Penfield and Webster has their moments as well, perhaps, I don't know, or Rondacoid and Webster too, I remember some issues there. Those issues arise, that's the natural way we do, we all kind of try to protect our self-interest, and having been mayor for three, three years, and I can kind of tell you that it's a natural thing you kind of get into, but that doesn't mean we gave up our cooperation with the town, ever. The town is a valuable partner to the village, so I assume that it will always be a valuable part, partner to the village. I think that's a different issue entirely, because what we're hearing tonight is not about that longstanding prosperous partnership. What we're hearing about is, I'll do it one more time, the cost, right? Let's get that number. After all these years, all these studies, and I got them all, I read them all, you complimented the other day about it too, you know, we've got to know the cost. Can't we just know that number? Can't we? We got talented people, look at them all, look at them all, they're all talented, I know all of you, you're all talented. I'm not nearly as talented, right? I just read the studies, I just know the numbers in my head, but you guys, you live it. So let's just get a cost before we make a decision about what to do. Let's let the village residents know, let's let the town residents know for that matter, what the costs are going to be, and then make the decision. You talked about risk, let's, let's have no one make risk, let's have there be as much zero risk as possible, so that what can happen is, we all know the costs moving forward. You're a talented guy, you are, you're an exceptionally talented guy, and I want to compliment you over and over, I'll keep doing that, but so are they. So you're all kind of working on this together, and I think the one thing we need to do is move forward knowing what the liability of our village residents are. That's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation, Matt, and you had a very good dialogue back and forth. So at this point, I think I need to close this, and we need to move on to other business.